I acknowledge Executive Assistant and Chief Delivery Advisor, Mr. Anye Fyok Johnson. I acknowledge all Honorable Commissioners and Delivery Advisors from Abak Federal constituency. Your Excellency, the Commissioner for Information is from Abak Local Government Area. We celebrate you. The Commissioner for Youth is from Etrembo Local Government Area. While the Commissioner for Women Affairs is from Ika Local Government Area. We celebrate all of you and we adore you. Your Excellency, all the stakeholders of this federal constituency are truly and duly acknowledged and celebrated. Time would fail me to list all of them one by one, but we honor and celebrate all of you. Our men, our women, we see you and we celebrate you. Let me acknowledge all our men and leaders through Obong Emi Afanide, who is here seated. Please, can we put our hands together to celebrate him? Thank you so much. We honor you. Your Excellency, a veteran, one that we adore and respect here, has come from Ukanafun Road and Federal constituency to witness what is happening here in Abak Federal constituency. So we celebrate the veteran Ray Egbu who is here in person. Please, can we put our hands together and celebrate him? Thank you so much. All the leaders of Abak are honored. All the leaders of Etrembo are honored. All the leaders of Ika, we celebrate you. We celebrate Emmanuel Enoye Dem, Senior Advocate of Nigeria. Iger Eteboko Kede. We celebrate also Uwe Demongwoko, Senior Advocate of Nigeria. Atar Jenny Kade, Jenny Kade Kede. We celebrate all of you and your spouses. And we thank you so much. Your Excellency, this is not a party affair. This affair cuts across party line. This is government and this is democracy. So let me also acknowledge a stakeholder of Abak Local Government Area. From the All Progressives Congress, Professor Nkuruwe Mekogodo is here and also seated. We celebrate and welcome you. Your Excellency, our Christian leaders have also joined us here. I acknowledge all of you through the Professor Azaya Omana. We thank you and all the others who are here. Captains of Industries through Uwe Mokoko, Fellow Nigeria Society of Engineers. We acknowledge all of you. Our traditional rulers are also here. The paramount rulers of Abak Etrembo Ika, all of them are here. I can see them to my far right. Please, can we put our hands together as we celebrate all of them? I also acknowledge now as I end, the Chairman of Local Government Areas. The Chairman of Algon is present. But I acknowledge in particular the Chairman of Abak Local Government Area, the Chairman of Etrembo Local Government Area, and the Chairman of Ika Local Government Area. I celebrate all our elders. I celebrate all our women. I celebrate all the youths. Below the youths, I celebrate all the students of the greatest Nigerian students. Thank you so much for coming out to receive His Excellency, the Governor. Our Governor, please, the women of Abak Federal constituency that are standing to my left, will give them two minutes to do their welcome song. Immediately after that, the Chairman of Abak Etrembo and Ika Local Government Area will come together to welcome His Excellency, the Governor. Four days Town Hall Meeting and Empowerment Series. But for now, the women, this is your moment. Please, Mbok Eben, a koi koi dara, eno governorji. Please, can you go ahead?
Araiso, araiso, araiso.
I pray to our church around evolution.
Araiso.
And he never tell you fun, I pray for thing.
Araiso. Kamnaw manabo. Araiso.
Rural Development. And he never tell you, everybody like you.
Araiso. Kamnaw manabo. Araiso.
The social up and down. All the worst things. And he was a good woman. I won't, I won't. I want to go. You are never so good.
Araiso, araiso. Kamnaw manabo.
You marry for the nation. I did marry you, you're bad.
Araiso. Kamnaw manabo. Araiso, araiso, araiso. Kamnaw manabo. Araiso, araiso.
Embia Oborono, Iban Abak Federal constituency. Thank you, thank you very much. Governor Moynhoobu Yai Arise. Iban, explain what the arise agenda is. Mo Yai Frowe, Embia Oborono, Embia Oborono. Eno Iban Abak Federal constituency, thank you so very much. Me kanine bena meti etyo, abasi idion mufu. Sosong, thank you, thank you. Thank you. While the women are going down to greet His Excellency, the Governor. Ladies and gentlemen, would like to put on cue the Executive Chairman of Abak Etrembo and Ika Local Government Areas as they shall come together to give a welcome remarks and welcome His Excellency, the Governor, and all our dignitaries to Abak Federal constituency. Chairman, please, come. Thank you very much, the band, thank you, the pure brass band. Your Excellency, we shall now take a welcome remarks by the Chairman of Abak Etrembo and Ika Local Government Areas.
Thank you very much. Would due respect to His Excellency, the Governor of Akwibom State, Pastor Umo Abasi Enno PHG, the Deputy Governor of Akwibom State. Distinguished guest, we beg to stand on the already established precedent. Thank you very much. So we, the Chairman of Abak Etrembo Ika, we welcome you to our federal constituency. And we are very happy that you have commenced this Town Hall, Novelle Town Hall Meeting from this federal constituency. Your Excellency, we are indeed very grateful for selecting us to work in line with the arise agenda. Your Excellency, want to remark most respectfully that the 100 villages of Abak Local Government Area welcome you. That the 100,000 votes from Abak welcome you. Mbono Etrembo, 88,000 votes and 98 villages welcome you. Mbonika, 67 Keseeta villages and 56,000 votes welcome you and your entourage. And we use these people that have welcomed you with the voters to return you to the Hilltop Mansion in 2027. We thank you so greatly. Thank you for all you have done for us and God bless your Excellency. Thank you very much.
Very concise, straight to the point welcome remarks there by the Chairman of Abak Federal constituency. Chairman, I'm gonna meet you. Your Excellency, please. Your Excellency, please. It is my pleasure now to invite the Secretary to the Government of Akwibom State, Prince Anoborua for the tone setting on this occasion, SSJ, please.
Abak ma, Etrembo ma, Ika mamado. Your Excellency, our leader, Governor of Akwibom State, Pastor Umo Abasi Enno. Your Excellency, the Deputy Governor of Akwibom State, Dr. Akon Airee. The Right Honourable Speaker of the Akwibom State House of Assembly. I'd like to stand on the existing protocol and say, Yabase Dion, Abak Federal constituency. Your Excellency, you have continued to redefine governance. You have continued to break barriers. You have continued to shatter the glass ceilings. These are events and activities that nobody believed government could do. But in your administration, you have led it clearly that the administration is for the people. And that is why when we're campaigning, I'm sure the DJ of campaigns will be happy. Because you said that we will go on Town Hall Meetings once we start the government. And today, we have kickstarted the Town Hall Meetings. A series of Town Hall Meetings to the 10 federal constituencies we have started today in Abak Federal constituency. Morabak Federal constituency, Ubom Government, Ation Ompharamiki Tyeemi. Iyeemi Sangantangikono, Federal constituency, Fapri Monokwibom. One, we want to tell you what we have done as a government in the last 20 months. The 20 months that we have been in government, His Excellency Pastor Moynho has proven that government can work. And we have also seen that government indeed can work. Also, we are going round to thank all of you for your support. Support from the elections and support throughout the last 20 months. If Abak Federal constituency is a song. The third one, we also are here to tell you about the projects that we are going to be doing in the next, the remaining eight months of government or 10 months of government in 2025. The project that we have for your federal constituency and of course for the whole state. And we want to now understand that one of the reasons we came here is for your inputs. The Governor has said that the people will be involved in what he is doing. And the reason for the Town Hall Meeting is also to get your inputs. Most importantly, we not only come here to talk. We have also come here, another glass ceiling that has been broken. We have also come here to empower you physically. On these grounds, if you check this book, you will see the list of people who are going to be empowered today in Abak Federal constituency. You'll see those that are going to be given the arise farmers grants, those that are going to get the arise traders grants, and those that are going to have the equipment support. For all those that have MSMEs, the checks are already ready, the money is ready. You are here to be empowered by His Excellency Pastor Moynho. So, Akwibom people, Abak Federal constituency, sit back and be empowered. Ya, isongo ru kana. Abak mamado.
Thank you. Sosong, sosonga, diet eti. The Secretary to the State Government, he has clearly stated why we are here. And I think those reasons are very, very laudable. Your Excellency Mbok, Mbono Bari de messe et mefu. Mboni Etrembo de messe et mefu. Mbonika de messe et mefu, diet eti. So we're going to take a few messages that would express the sentiments and the feelings of the people of this federal constituency towards your action as the Governor of our dear state. Mbok, I'll take the liberty to list the four leaders that will be speaking. Your Excellency, the first we'll be hearing from Professor Nkuruwe Mekogodo. After that, we would hear from Emmanuel Enoye Dem, Senior Advocate of Nigeria. Nedrisangidogika, Ikomito, Uwe Demongwoko, Senior Advocate of Nigeria. The Little Media Back, Ideko, from the very cerebral Uncle Mo, Moses Seko, Member of the Order of the Federal Republic. So can I please request that we put our hands together as we begin to receive these leaders of Abak Federal constituency who will be speaking to us at this event in this series of goodwill messages? The fact is that if you dance without people to tell you how your back is, you may be thinking you are doing right with us. You may not in fact be doing so well. So we welcome the professor and the development enthusiasts as he kickstarts this series of goodwill messages for us. I don't mama, I don't mama. Thank you very much, the brass band. Brass band, Mbo konam, konam, konam. Konam, back proper man, back on the deck, we can hear you. Bravo, welcome. Mbok, Ketae Kambo Pono. His Excellency, the most admirable, the indivisible, very intelligent Governor of Akwibom State, His Excellency Governor Basiumoynho. Let me also acknowledge her Excellency, the Deputy Governor of Akwibom State. Then having said that, let me adopt and stand on the already established protocol. Ah, make come Abasi eti eti. Savasieke nama, make a day, I get an act intentionally because debirabo, from your belly, I know you. So, from the belly, Umano was known. And that was why his election was most purposeful. Ndiame, nte yana back, nte pana kukum midim. Nte gera ford midim. Mbok, Yabasi, Adion, His Excellency, Udon Geprele Mandual, Ikebe ne pastor Moynho, Adi. Because Mbok yet, and the middle of your name frame. I bank, call, call, is a cala kidet. And Governor Mano has given us that. And that is peace of mind. He has unified the state. He has unified Akwibom. Okay, look at me, I'm coming all the way from Joss. Just because His Excellency is coming. And this is the first time I've mounted a post, uh, this rostrum to talk about a governor. And maybe I'm okay now, Esel Oopatro, Ekma, Enwa Fer, Abak. I buy the, the governor, they say, see, I'm more, believe me. I buy the, the governor, linear, diga basi, believe me. I buy the, the governor, the president of this great country, I go, okay, you're the best governor, believe me. Because Bonlahame Tinumbu, who pays me my salary to empower my people? Abo, Pastor Umano is the best governor. And he has also said, that 2027, there is no campaign for Governor Mano. He's going on a post. So, Mbiop, Mbiopare diyango, can see bene, when more they fear. I buy the, the, I kidet, believe me. I'm move again, Mbiopak, Etrembo, Ika, Oduonam, Ukanafun, Kego, no more, I start a new. Idakere ye ye, idakere ye ye, Konojo, Ugwe me, Ikomoto, at any point in time, came in, take pana kukuku, came midim. Mbok, came in ya, da ke ye, and yeah. Then, non come on ye, Akpan Akpan, can even a model school, idi. Because education is a light path for anybody to follow. I'm a professor of medical physiology. So with, with what he's doing, there will be massive employment for the youth. Having endorsed you for a second term, I want His Excellency, That get that, that. I said, the man, I'm, I'm a manager, but I'm telling me, telling me, telling me. Young, your leader, I get back. Eighteen, they got no more, and now. Who's really loose that? Who's, yeah, you know, who's so? God, we're the brother, but you'll say, but, my goal, young person, or you look at. Then, I don't want to touch, they were so good. So, His Excellency, your task, I did, as you go back, talk to your representative back. We don't want division. We have all endorsed you and we are working for you. So there's no division care about. Then, pump in, I did a new, who don't they do? I sang, I sang, I did, please. I bet, I told you, I don't know, but send their para cuckoo. I cannot kneel down because of this tool. I would have kneel down, interrogate the activities of the paramount like a back by Liban, no, so. Yeah, call me to run your own, I see. Then after that, and they're gonna cuckoo, uh, yeah, pong, and I'm known. No, see, they're coming, they're coming, say, they were, and no governor. Yeah, call me to run your own, I see. But this is what I tell you. More, the, me, I'm, more, me, I'm, more, me, I'm, more. And now the professor, Eto'odah. A chief ten of the all progressives congress. I'm walking that pastor man on Pariba. So, so, I tell you, thank you very much, the brass band. As I invite a man who annoy them, the most courageous man in Africa. Your Excellency, Jack Man and Tang, Kese, the Rock, Patrick, I'm a referee. Jack, I'm a man who annoy them, and say, and they tell you, cause sin, cause they prove what they are. Yes, yes, yes. I've been the ambassador. Oh, oh, for, yeah, the core, Hallelujah, yes, yes, I've been the ambassador. Oh, oh, for, yeah, the core, Hallelujah. Yes, yes, I've been the ambassador. Oh, oh, for, yeah, the core, Hallelujah. Yes, yes, I've been the ambassador. Oh, oh, for, yeah, the core. About mama. It's where, Mama. I can, Mama, I why, Mama, they. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Power to the people. Power to the governor. Power to the deputy governor. Power to everybody. I call you to, you go. Yeah, but getting Jesus Christ. Coco. Governor, gee. Leader, gee. I hear, he take, he show. Come for, I see. And boy, you had a governor, five home state. Keep a form, PDP, keep 2023, you know, boy, no, yeah. Bo, God, yeah, we go, my, for your, equal. Okay, more, Saka, eh, wonder? Go, my, for equal, okay, I'm more, Saka. I get a gift, I feel, I'm no. You know, I'm okay, they go, I see. You know, I'm okay, I'm here, my, no, I'm here. You know, I'm okay, I'm here, I'm here. You know, I'm okay, I'm here, I'm here. Me, me, you know, you see, yeah. Oh, you had a governor. You know, boy, no governor. You know, boy, no governor. He like it, don't get campaign governor. Many people did not believe us. They did not believe us. But today, the governor is a telling of everybody in a five percent. You know, boy, no governor. You know, boy, no governor. I'm more political, but. And so, I believe. Since 15th century. He, now, they get, they, come, make, we can be the square. Again, I get, I go, maybe, I go, I go, I go, I know, you know. That is the beginning of democracy. Today, our governor, I return power to the people. You know, boy, no governor. Don't hold me, don't want to, don't hold me, don't want to. Governor, you have done, federal constituency, and I can, all the same, federal consensus.
Celebrate as we hear from the immediate past Deputy Governor of Akwabom State. The last in the series of goodwill messages. Thank you. Your Excellency, the Governor of Akwabom State. Excellency, the Deputy Governor, Secretary to the State Government. As your indulgence, Your Excellency, to adopt the protocol that has been established. Your Excellency, I said during your anniversary of one year in office, that you've earned for yourself the title of a governor in Akwabom State that will remain to be surpassed. Why? Your Excellency, you commissioned several projects in Akwabom State during your first one year. That is not a story, but the story behind the story is that, Your Excellency, most of these projects were projects from your predecessor. No governor has ever done that in Akwabom State. I don't think anybody else in Nigeria has done that. And I did say at that time, you are the man to watch. I have watched you. Uh, let me thank first and foremost, Professor Togooda for the encomiums he placed on you. Uh, Professor Togooda happened to have been one of our leading lights, but who wasn't very sure that the PDP could field a good governor and in your person. And today, I think it's very clear to him that we had the best and the very best. I think Governor Domi Manuel, my boss, did not go wrong when he persuaded you, because it was persuasion, uh, that you should take office. He persuaded you several times you were not going to continue. But he did say at that time that he has no alternative. Your alternative number one, your alternative number two, your alternative number three. I don't think he went wrong. I didn't think he went wrong. Your Excellency, one significant thing I want you to understand is that the people of Abak, Etmekbo, Ika, local government areas, the federal constituency, realize that perhaps without you, we may not have won that election. Because today and then the opposition was waiting, was waiting to make sure that the PDP did not bring a governor for Akwabom State. Today, they have realized that it was in the interest of Akwabom State, in the interest of this federal constituency, that we emerged as the Governor of Akwabom State. I can, I can repeat all that they have said, but all that they have said is true, absolutely true. And so what I would tell my people about Etmekbo Ika, I pray they care enough them, if body name there. Your Excellency, carry go. You'll be governor for two terms. You'll be governor that has left landmarks. Nobody can deny that. And so you've set a mark for whoever will be your successor. I want to ask you, sir, when you are leaving office, please find us a governor that will be like you, that will think like you, that will be God fearing like you, because that will be the success of your administration. Thank you very much. I want to thank your team uh, for all that they have done to give you. If it is the beauty that is government in power, this federal constituency has always stayed with the government in power. We have never changed. And if tonight you live Abak and you carry dreams of a solid people, it is because we believe that you have not left any stone on town to look at the entire community of our constituency, our country. And we want a governor that will look after Akwabom State, not just Abak state. I know that that is true of you. Thank you very much for coming today. And we will come back many, many, many more times. And we will be with you at all times. Your Excellency. About federal constituency, ma! About five, ma! Akwabom State, ma, ma doo! Your Excellency, this is a sword, but it's also a walking stick. I'm not sure you have enemies on the road, so you may not use them, but just in case they appear. Your Excellency, we're enjoying you to use it and clear your path. But your path is clear because with God, everything is absolute. Thank you, Your Excellency. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, immediate past Deputy Governor, presenting that gift there to the Governor of our state. Thank you. Your Excellency, we were here to get the inputs of the people of Abak Federal constituency for you to continue to lead a people-centered government in Akwabom State. Now, we have come to the moment where we'll be receiving the niche document from the leadership and the people of Abak Federal constituency. I want to very respectfully now welcome the gentleman who speaks for Abak State constituency in the House of Assembly and who by the grace of God is also the Speaker of the Akwabom State House of Assembly. Please, that he accepts to lead on the stakeholders of this federal constituency. To come up to the microphone as they present a unified niche document for this federal constituency. A document that the Governor will check on and include its plans and policies moving forward. Please, can we celebrate him? Please, let's continue to celebrate the leaders of Abak Federal constituency as they come up to present their unified niche document. Thank you, thank you, thank you, the brass band. Mister Speaker and the leadership of Abak Federal constituency, please. Abak Etmekbo Ika ma! Abak ma! Etmekbo ma! Ika ma! Abak mama, Abak mama! Iro mama, Iro mama! PDP! Power to the people!
PDP!
PDP and P!
PDP Francis Clay.
Your Excellency, the Executive Governor of Akwabom State, our leader, the one that is doing very well to the admiration of all the parties in Nigeria, Pastor Umar Basiano PhD. Your Excellency, the Deputy Governor, who is a very good supporter of his Excellency, the Governor, Doctor, Senator Akon Yarani. Let me go to my constituency. I've seen the Deputy Speaker of Akwabom State and the entire members of Akwabom State here present. The PDP Chairman of Akwabom State. Let me rely on the protocol that was established by our own barrister Morgan. Your Excellency, my position is to present to you the niche documents from Abak Etmekbo Ika on the occasion of the town hall meeting on empowerment here in Abak Local Government. Your Excellency, on behalf of the stakeholders and people of Abak Etmekbo and Ika Federal constituency, we warmly welcome his Excellency Pastor Umar Basiano PhD, the Governor of Akwabom State to Abak, the headquarters of our federal constituency. It is an honor to have you with us today and we deeply appreciate your love for our people and indeed the entire state. Your Excellency, in just 20 months, your administration has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to the fulfillment of your campaign promises, delivering tangible development and progress across our communities. Your passion for agriculture, rural development, infrastructural expansion, security management and educational investments. The core pillars of your arise agenda has driven holistic growth and inclusive governance. This is evidence of the numerous project you have initiated, completed, as well as ongoing project which we have listed herein. We thank you most sincerely, Your Excellency, for all you do. We particularly thank you for fulfilling your promises of returning to breathe and engage with the people and the process obtained input for making the 2026 people's budgets. The empowerment component is a clear indication of your commitment to improve lives and fostering education and growth in our communities. These niche documents present both the development, the developmental projects you have executed and initiated and the ones that are being initiated. It is, it highlights our most pressing infrastructural and socioeconomic needs while acknowledging the significant progress already made through various completed and ongoing projects of your administration. Our needs are outlined in these documents on local government basis for your Excellency kind consideration in the formulation of the 2026 People's Budgets. As a people of this federal constituency, Your Excellency, we deeply appreciate your Excellency visioning their leadership and commitment to the development of our constituency and the entire state. We therefore pledge our unwavering support for your administration and its continued effort to drive inclusive development across our constituencies till 2031. Welcome once again and may God bless you, Your Excellency. Your Excellency, for what we have seen today, the entire federal constituency is behind you. And having seen the work that you have done in this federal constituency, is the wish of this federal constituency to call for a motion to give you the support come 2027 to 2031. Let me therefore call on member representing Etmekbo Ika to move a motion for this constituency to stand by his Excellency and support him in 2027 to 2031. Right Honorable Founn Idom, move the motion.
Thank you, Your Excellency, very distinguished guests that are here. My name, Right Honorable Founn Frank Idom, speaking for the good people of Etmekbo Ika and by extension, this gathering today. Your Excellency, do move the motion on behalf of all the leaders of Etmekbo, Abak, Etmekbo and Ika people that we extend your tenure by our vote come 2027 to 2031. Your Excellency, distinguished people that are here, I so move. Thank you very much. Let me call on our own Right Honorable Nye Kan Umala to second that motion.
Thank you very much, Mister Speaker. Your Excellency, my name is Right Honorable Nye Kan Umala. Your Excellency, I had the privilege of speaking for the people of Abak Etmekbo Ika Federal constituency in the Nigerian House of Representatives. And today, by your magnanimity, I serve as your Commissioner for Information. Thank you very much, sir. Your Excellency, our distinguished guest, Mister Speaker, having listened to the motion as so eloquently moved by Right Honorable Founn Frank Iron, representing Etmekbo Ika State constituency, I rise and stand to second every element of that motion that you be returned to office in 2027 through 2031. I so second.
Your Excellency, a motion has been moved and duly seconded that you continue from 2027 to 2031. Those in favor, say aye! Those against, say no. Nobody. The ayes have it accordingly. Your Excellency, this federal constituency will support you in 2027 to 2031. Thank you very much. PDP!
Power to the people!
Power to the people!
PDP!
Your Excellency, you have no fear. 2031, no contest apart from you. Your Excellency, you are coming to present a niche document. And some gifts, Your Excellency, we have so many things for you. The women of Abak Etmekbo Ika has really done well. They have a lot of food and the leadership, the stakeholders. We have our own Kaen Anun. Ibahejalan Woman. Iwo Gwita and the Biki Bobok, Anyam and more and more and more and more. Iminye, Ebor, Ejalan Woman. Ewisui Bobok. Your Excellency, we are coming. We have palm seedlings. Your Excellency, since you are an agriculturist, we have 40 ton of raviapalm seedlings and palm fruits here and that we are coming to present to you round, Your Excellency. Thank you. Please let us celebrate the leaders of Abak Federal constituency.